Point meeting of the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance, and from my side I'll call the Board of Selectmen to order for Thursday, February 21st, 2019.
And I will call to order the Board of Finance for the meeting, a special meeting on tonight, tonight, Thursday, February 21st.
And if you would all please rise during the budget process.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so you're working on a PowerPoint, are you correct? Grant?
Uh, yeah, I'm doing some issues.
Okay. No, we have no issues here, we have opportunities. So I'm gonna turn the floor over to Melanie O'Brien, Vice Chair of the Board of Education.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Peter Barker. I'm just here to make some opening comments before we start the budget presentation for the district budget for 2019, 2020. I just wanted to do an overview in terms of the budget-making process and the budget drivers from our standpoint. The budget-making process, you may be surprised to know, is an ongoing process. It really is the entire year of collecting information, collecting data, that enters into ultimately the budget we're going to see tonight. So the main budget drivers are, not surprisingly, our student count, but not just the students' in number, we have subgroups of students that matter greatly to our budget, we have English language learners, we have special ed students, we have free and reduced lunch students, all of whom count and maybe differently than other members of our population. So beyond the school population itself then, are the data that we derive from testing, we have lots of data. So we know how our kids are doing and where they're achieving and where they're not achieving, and so it's really important to collect this data and superimpose that on top of that student body. And then there's the alignment with the strategic plan or goals for the district and for the kids, where we want to see them going and how we're gonna get them there. And also, that big, I want to say elephant in the room, are the state requirements that have a way of changing. In this particular budget, we're having some impact from state requirements we might not have in the past, we've reached certain student population levels that are triggering us to have staffing, additional staffing. And there are also some college graduation credit requirements that are changing that we have to get ready for, we have to prepare to be ready to have those kids educated and have the credits that they need, and that's also affecting some of our staffing decisions. So all of that information is all collated and collaborated with, and ultimately the superintendent puts together a budget and presents it to the Board of Education, and then we start our work, which is to conduct a number of budget workshops which are open to the public, and we pull apart those numbers and we ask why this is going up and why this is going down, and, you know, are benefits going up this year, what's going on with these numbers? And ultimately, and I will say as part of that process, that we are very concerned that we are maximizing our resources, that we are utilizing every dollar, stretching every dollar, and that's really our mantra, we are trying to, of course, meet the needs of our kids, but we're also very cognizant of the fact that we have taxpayers to account to and are very, very sensitive to that. So ultimately, with all that taken into consideration, we make a decision on the budget, and this particular budget you're being presented with tonight is the Board of Education adopted and approved, unanimously approved budget, and I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Harper.
Thank you. Is it okay if I stand, because I feel like you're talking to your back as I present the budget for the board? So I always like to start our presentations with pictures of our students, and you're gonna see pictures of students sprinkled throughout this presentation, one, because I'm incredibly proud of them, and I think everybody in the district is, but this is why we're here, this is what we're about in the Bethel Public Schools. And as you know, over the past three years, actually it's a five-year plan, we've been working on our strategic plan, and we've been consciously trying to align the budget presentation to the work as our, the work of a district and what we're hoping to accomplish as a district. And I saw this quote, and it really reflects, I think, where we've come in the past several years, where great things aren't done by impulse, but a series of small things brought together. And it was a quote by Van Gogh, but it really struck me because it's really reflective of that plan and of that work that we were doing. It's not published, and I'm not supposed to say anything out loud, but our accountability scores came out today, and I'm really proud to say that we're right up there, we beat Ridgefield in our accountability measures. Uh, sorry, Rob. I had to find him out! But we did-
We're really not sorry, Rob.
You're right, we're not. Because we're pretty competitive. But we are performing at high levels in this district, and a part of it is, and the accountability index has to do with a lot of different factors, but it's one of the things that we're great at, and it's really a reflection of the staff, the staff that's in the room, the teachers, really the work that they do in growing all students. So where are students and how are they taking to that next step? And so moving that system to those big goals, I think, is what makes us proud as a system and all the great programs and services we have. So, that being said, our mission is to not, to really ensure that we have the top quality education for our students and that they are here and they are ready to leave, ready, whether they go to college or don't go to college, but they have the skills that they're gonna need to be competitive in a global society. And this is a phrase that Dr. Chesley actually coined a number of years ago, and it's really been the mantra of the Bethel Public Schools, that our real purpose is to improve student achievement. So always to move the bar for our students, regardless of where they are, how can we maximize their potential? So that being said, and I think Melanie said this beautifully, we always look at the focus of the budget, not only through this plan that we're trying to implement and improve as a system, but I think you probably know, or I think I certainly have the reputation of fiscal efficiency, I try to maximize the resources, and certainly Mrs. Jansky, we make an effort to try to maximize resources to get the most out of things. But we're really at a tipping point, and I'm gonna show you some numbers, this is just a visual of our strategic plan and kind of our goals that we've been working on as a district. But I really want to talk about our enrollment and demographics. When I've come here the past couple of years, and we were talking about the Johnson and Rockwell renovation projects, and we were looking at our projected enrollment, and we looked at the Malone and McBroom study, many of you were here when we had those conversations, and we really are seeing a shift in not only the number of students that we're actually serving, but the demographic makeup of those students. So I want to just kind of run through that quickly, because one of the things that is a reality of us, and I said this to the Board, when it was just 50 students, and, you know, you sprinkle it across grade levels and you add a child to one class or another, it doesn't make as significant of an impact. When you start to look at it over time, it has substantially changed what we're doing. So let's look at the numbers. So when I started here in 2014, we had about 2,900 students. This year on our October 1 count, we're up to 3,130. And I can say, we literally have new students registering almost every week. The shift, again, when you start to absorb them in little pieces, 50 students a year or 25 students more, we've been able to absorb it, but we've gotten to a tipping point, as Mrs. O'Brien said, with the impact and the strain on resources that we have not yet experienced before. I also want to mention that we have had a shift in our free and reduced lunch calculation. And before I show you what actually the shift is, and some of you may already know this, I want to kind of explain why. So, the state of Connecticut actually changed how they calculate free and reduced lunch. In the past, it was based primarily on income, on self-reporting, right, Terry?
Yep, and there was direct certification, but it was a certain criteria like SNAP benefits and other things like that.
So Connecticut is one of nine states piloting this, and so now what they've included in their new calculation for free and reduced lunch is actually any student that's on Medicaid also. So, that would include any student that gets their health insurance through Husky, I mean, or Medicaid, that's the primary mechanism, that now would automatically qualify you and what, as Terry said, direct certify you as free and reduced lunch. So our overall population has gone up substantially with that change. We were, last year at this time, when I presented to you, it was about 20%, we're now at 28%. And really, the impact of that, anytime you, and I guess the more alarming part, which has been pretty consistent over time, is when you look at free, purple is free, you look at purple, that's a higher level than the reduced amount, so meaning we have more kids of higher poverty levels in that free category. So, what does that mean? The biggest impact is how we program for those students. I won't go into detail right now, but there's a high correlation between poverty and the development of literacy skills. And so it requires extra support and services to actually remediate those skills, to be able to close achievement gaps and make sure that the students are on par with their peers.
Just to let the Boards know, the PowerPoint is now in the 450th round.
You did follow along, okay. We've also seen a significant number of students enter the district with disabilities. So, when I started in about 2014, we had 332 students with this, identified with disabilities. This year on our October 1 count, we now have 411 students. So we have 79 more students than we started with over the past couple of years. And the impact of that really has to do with programming and providing appropriate services that we are federally mandated to provide for students. And we've really had almost no increase in any type of support or staffing to accommodate for those. So the good news is, is we have a wonderful staff who looks at a group of students' needs and is able to create programs in district to support with the students with disabilities so we do not have to outplace them. And we did add this year, but it was through a grant, we have a federal grant called IDEA, we did have to add an additional special ed teacher, but it was paid through a grant to support the special ed programs, primarily at Johnson School, and that position will actually shift next year to the high school because the means are gonna shift as the children move. So, you know, we're dealing with a greater number of students, and this is just some data about what's happening across the state, so it's not just a trend in Bethel, but if you look, the top line indicates how many students are in Connecticut right now that don't have a disability. So if you look, you see a slight decrease in the number of students that are served in general, and that's across Connecticut, the overall student population, it's not necessarily true here in Bethel, but in the state, the student population is declining slightly. But if you look, at the same time, this number of students identified with a disability is going up slightly. So it's pretty consistent what we're seeing here, what we're seeing across the state. And if you look at our count and our percentage, it's just slightly increased from, in 2016 it was, I'm sorry, this year in 2018, we're at 13.2%. The state is always behind in where their percentages are, but if you look at the total numbers, you're gonna project that over the next couple of years, you're probably gonna see an increase in the overall percentages of students with disabilities across the state. So our data is pretty consistent with states. So, but we've accomplished a lot in special ed. Part of the way that we've tried to be fiscally efficient is that we've tried to develop programs so that our students can be served without causing out-of-district placements. I will tell you that last year, we presented to you that we were going to be creating two full-day sessions at Circle of Friends. We anticipated that was something that parents wanted, and I can tell you, they did. The program's filled up right away, and the full-day model is much more attractive as a preschool option for parents, because the reality is, they just can't get their working, they can't get their child to preschool, and we know that preschool is one of the best ways to close achievement gaps later on. So it really was a good thing. We've spent a lot of time training our students, our special ed teachers, in intervention programs, executive functioning, and Mrs. Budris and her team have done a phenomenal job to create programs in district for students who have behavioral disorders or mental health needs. Again, these are typically kids that would have been out of district placed at one time, but now we're able to provide support for them directly in our schools, which ultimately saves the town of Bethel millions of dollars. So that's the creative work that our staff has done. We've expanded our mentor programs, Mrs. Budris was actually able to secure a suicide prevention grant, which has also become unfortunately a growing issue in terms of overall anxiety. And we've also expanded our unified sports program, are you guys all familiar with that model? It's fabulous, it's probably the best sporting event to go to. It's students with disabilities and typical peers that wouldn't have the opportunity to be in an athletic team, and we actually compete against other schools. So we have, we have basketball, we soccer-
Well, this year we were nationally recognized as one of the top 30 programs-
In the country.
-in the country, not to brag, but, pretty awesome.
By ESPN.
And this year we started this program at Johnson, the Johnson Middle School.
Yeah, it's a fabulous program for students with disabilities. So our challenges, and one of the questions I got from the Board right away, well, how many of these kids that are new to the district are special ed students? And I will tell you that this year alone, we had 22 new students that just moved here with IEPs that we had to program for this school, this school year that weren't part of our district last year. Our outplacements are a little bit higher, we had been hovering around 17 students, we're up to about 20. And I would just, and we talk about reimbursement later for special ed, a typical outplacement probably starts at about $100,000 without transportation, a child, and then it goes up from there. And when we talk about some of the revenue later, part of that is supposed to be reimbursed by the state, and we don't necessarily get the total reimbursement, but we'll get there later. This is all a long way of saying, it's increased cost, because we have more kids with higher needs and we cannot program them in district, we have no other option but to place out. I will say, that compared to some of our surrounding communities, oftentimes you'll see in the paper, special ed's in the deficit, right, in certain districts. We have managed it beautifully because of the phenomenal staff and the great programs that we've been able to develop in district to meet kids' needs. But part of the issues that we're encountering is, is that we're seeing a lot more children with much more intense mental health needs at very young ages. So there, I used to be a special ed teacher and a special ed director, and typically you really see that at the middle and high school level, we're seeing it like in kindergarten, whether it's trauma-based, mental health issues. So we have to, we have to program for these children, they're our children, they live in our community, and we're obligated and mandated by federal law to provide appropriate services for them. And as we've already said, we've been able to manage it all without asking for any more resources, because we've been creative in trying to find ways to provide, first and foremost, quality education programs, but secondly, in a fiscally efficient way. And that's really been our mantra as we approach some of these challenges. But we're really kind of at a tipping point. The next subgroup that I'm gonna talk about is English learners, and that is also something that we've seen an increase in. When I started, I was actually about 80, 85 students, we're now up to 199 students, 198, 199. And again, just like students from poverty, it presents different needs that you have to accommodate for. So students who are English learners, obviously, language acquisition is a huge problem, right, because they're learning the language as they enter the system. I think one of the things that we've seen is that they're not necessarily entering at kindergarten, because we actually have a pretty good track record of exiting students out of our EL services, we call it, within like a three-year timeframe, where the children are acquiring English and gaining skills in their regular academics. The issue that we're encountering now is, we're getting kids in high school that have never, that have never been in an English-speaking environment. And so it's a challenge because, for obvious reasons, you know, and it really depends on the country of origin. So if a student comes from a country where it is, they have a solid education and have their, the language acquisition is a lot easier. If they come from a place where they don't necessarily have the quality of educational services, dealing and providing interventions for them, because it's not only typically a language acquisition gap, but compounded on that is actually an academic gap, if that makes sense. So you have to provide specialized program, and we'll talk about that more in a minute for those students. We added a certified teacher last year in our K-3 schools, and that person was actually, is currently split between Berry and Rockwell. We've developed systems of support, intervention programs, and I will commend our staff, because it's difficult as a teacher, when you have a group of students and you have two students move in that don't speak English, and you don't necessarily have the training to be able to appropriately intervene for them. But we have a nice culture in our system that creates a supportive learning environment so that we do make kids feel welcome and give them the appropriate interventions that they need. But the challenges, I think I've covered most of them. Literacy skills are a challenge, and we also really have to provide more embedded and sustained professional learning for our teachers so that they can actually get the skills, even in a regular ed setting, where they can acquire language as part of their instruction or the language acquisition. And the other thing I would comment on is that when you have a low incidence population, you don't have a lot of kids in one space, in one grade level, it's actually sometimes more challenging to program for, because, you know, Danbury has bilingual programs, they have like full-blown ESL programs, because just a large population of students are there. When you have a smaller group and they're in pockets in different schools in different places, it's not impossible, it just kind of creates a challenge on how you develop a comprehensive program for those students. So, again, we're gonna get a little bit into staffing in a minute, but the question I always ask is, so what are we getting, what is that, what are the taxpayers in Bethel getting as a return on investment for the money that they're spending with the Bethel Public Schools and the school system? And I'm just gonna quickly go through some of our strategic plan and our strategic goals, because we have invested in certain things in our system, and we really have seen good outcomes for them. This year, when we first started the program, or the, looking at what we call "All Students Can Learn," we were really talking about students that had academic gaps or challenges. And over the past couple of years, we've shifted our strategy, because I'm gonna show you some data in a little bit, that shows that we've actually made a lot of progress based on what we've done and the resources that we've applied to close the achievement gap for our lower kids. And the other thing that was clear to me when I entered the Board is, there was a huge concern about mathematics, and we've made tons of progress in that area. We're not, I don't want to tell you we're there, because we're not, but we've made tons of progress by all the supports and systems that we've developed in it. But over the past year, we've not only been keeping that work done with intervention, but we also started looking at, we have an obligation not just to close achieving gaps of students that have sometime deficit, but how are we growing all kids? So if you are a bright kid, or what we call a level four kid, you'll see that here, you know, you're at the higher end of the spectrum, we should be growing you just as much as we're growing the kids at lower levels. And when I talked about the accountability index that is gonna be released tomorrow, that I'm not supposed to talk about publicly, but when it's, one of the reasons for our growth is because we've made more progress growing all kids at all levels. And that's a huge accomplishment for a system, and so how do we make sure that children have rigorous environments for that? So what's been the net result? We're proud of our graduation rate, 96.9% of the kids at Bethel High School graduate in four years, that's an incredible accomplishment. Our AP exams are going up, and we know that AP is an indicator not only of college success, but it also provides parents some relief, because if you get certain scores on your AP exams, depending upon the school you go to, some take it at different levels. But we're seeing increases, and we're most proud of the fact that some of our lower areas, like math and science, actually went up this year. And something that's different at Bethel, that's not true in some other schools, is we require every kid that takes an AP class to take an exam. Not all schools do that, they offer it to students. And so sometimes you see school districts with higher scores, but they don't always necessarily make their, we believe that if you're going to take this class, that you should have the rigorous experience of taking the exam, either way. Now, if you look over time, another thing that's been great is, we, so we had 213 students who actually took AP exams in 2018, and so we encourage all of our kids to take it. We don't set criteria about whether or not, whether or not you should take an EPA class, because we believe that if you want to try it and you want to engage in that rigorous experience, which is gonna prepare you for college, you should have that option. And so, but we're seeing some good results. It's gone up and down, but we're seeing some good results. Our absenteeism rate, sadly say, went up a little bit, and chronic absenteeism is a new, a new accountability measure that, from the state, and what they look at is not your daily attendance and the percent of students here, but they look at the number of kids that have more than 10, they're out of school more than 10% of the total days of school. So if you're in school for 180 days, you would have to be absent 18 days to be considered chronically absent. And for us, the data, the state went up a little bit too. For us, it was more of a high school issue, but I will tell you that this year, the high school probably implemented more processes to try to keep kids in school. Didn't work, but I, but I think, Mari tried hard, but I think, over time, it will sustain. I mean, I think it's a start of a good plan, and I think over time we'll see some shifts. It's very different talking about a kid that's missing school in high school versus elementary. These are our reading and math scores, we saw a big increase in both literacy and mathematics this year on the measures of academic progress, and we also saw similar results on our S-Back scores. S-Back is Smarter Balanced, which is the state assessment that we give students, and you can see at each grade level, our students are performing really well compared to the state. And I talked a little bit about math, right? A couple of years ago, Bethel's math numbers were not in the 60%, so good progress is being made in that area also. And this is a chart I showed you at one point also, but we look at the percentage of students that are making growth, you'll see the green essentially means good, or you see high levels of growth, and we talked about all the great intervention programs that we've implemented, both in literacy and mathematics, which I'll show you next, it's starting to really move kids at the lower levels, and we did see even kids at the highest level make growth. But where we know we need to focus, and we're still working on it, is that average kid, the kid who's not at the high end or the low end, but right in the middle is not making the same level of growth, so we know that's our work coming for next year. And it's similar in mathematics. PSATs, SATs, again, this is just a reflection of some of the great work that we've been doing and seeing growth over time compared to the state. But I want to talk a little bit about the impact of some of these challenges on the budget. This is the staff on opening day this year, I made them stand on the football field with t-shirts, and it was probably 110 degrees, and we all stood there, so we got a good picture. But the reality is, we have excellent teachers. But, when we look at our enrollment over time, and I think Terry said in 2007 was probably the last time that Bethel had the number of students that we have currently, am I wrong? Okay. And we are down about 15 and a half positions since the time we're the same number of students, and the needs are much more complex and challenging, as I just described to you. This is just a visual of it, kind of where we are, where we were in 2007 and '08, and where we are today in terms of the number of staffing. So I'm gonna walk you through- So I'm going to walk you through, I think Melanie introduced it well, some of these shifts that have caused us to add staffing in this budget. I think you know me well enough. If I can find it in the district and move it, I will. Because I don't like adding resources if I don't have to. But we're at a point where I can't do that anymore. It's just getting to a point where a class size, it's either causing really, really big class sizes or actually in violate, violation of some laws. So let me walk you through it. I talked about the English learners. There's actually, I think it's a law. It's definitely a State Department requirement. It's a law. Yeah, it is a law. That if you have 20 or more students of a same language group, you're mandated to provide bilingual education. Last year, we hit the trigger at Rockwell School with our Spanish population. And Berry is really, really close to meeting the same trigger. So they have, they have, Berry has 48 students, Rockwell has 51. In that number, at least 20 students are Spanish-speaking students. That triggers that we have to have certified staff to meet those children's need. This year, on October 1, the high school met that same threshold. So we're required by law to provide certified ESL staffing at the high school level. The only difference is, is that their prominent language group is in Portuguese. So that's the difference. We have provided, and this next graphic will show you, we've provided a lot of our staffing to support students. Mrs. Rutledge oversees our English learner program. And we've provided a lot of it just through tutoring services because, because it's met the need of a lot of different students. But because we're at that tipping point at the high school, you'll see in this, the budget, a reflection of an additional teacher for the ESL program at the high school that's mandated. Okay, we also have another challenge. And our second challenge does not have anything to do with mandates. It has to do with very big, large classes. The current sixth grade class is about 276 students. And the current fifth grade class is 260 students. I'm going to compare that to other grade levels. Other grade levels typically run between 200 to 220 students. So at those, in those, I call it the bubble class. I think I've talked about it every year. It just has a new challenge because those kids are now entering the middle school. And where the challenge is, is that because the sixth and seventh grade class, this year, what we did was we moved two teachers from the elementary level to the, to the middle school and we had what's called a split cluster in sixth grade. So we have two teams and we have one team of two teachers. And that kept the class size manageable, probably like 24, 25, I'm looking at Brian. If we didn't have it, if we didn't have that split cluster, we would have class sizes of over 30, probably close to 35. It's, it would be a significant difference in the amount of students in a class. So we have that class in the sixth grade plus we got another one coming up. The second problem is, is that within that, so what we're doing is proposing a split cluster between sixth and seventh grade. So the, the middle school's been incredibly creative in how they're balancing staff. So to, some teachers will have to teach both in sixth and seventh grade. But the additional challenge associated with it is when you teach seventh grade, you have to be content area certified. So we can't put just any teacher, I can't move a teacher from elementary into seventh grade because they don't have the right certification to be able to teach that. So the net result of it is, is that we need two more teachers at the middle school to be able to create the split cluster. But, I feel like the Ginsu knives, but, we are able to move somebody from the elementary school that has certification. So it's only an addition of one FTE to, to meet that. That's correct, right?
And we don't have the room to move a second from elementary because that'll drive the elementary class sizes up. But, but we're, we can squeak one.
I can squeak one.
So that leaves us with only having to add one.
Correct. Again, if we didn't do it, you're talking about class sizes of over 35 in the middle school. If anybody knows middle school, it's not a good place. It's a wonderful place, but it is a great place. But developmentally, it's a tricky, it's a tricky age. It's definitely a tricky age. All right, so this is going to be a little confusing. Because of the middle school issue, in the sixth and seventh, of the seventh and eighth grade, the way it's structured is they have the four content areas, math, English, social studies, and science. And the fifth one is a world language. And that's the core of, of a child's day. Because now we have another split cluster, it's impacting also world language. In addition to that, there's a new graduation requirement. Mrs. O'Brien mentioned that there is a new law that is being implemented with the current eighth grade class. It's called, it's around high school graduation. And for the most part, we're able to accommodate that. But one of the new requirements is, is that we have, every student has to take at least one year of world language. I thought most of our students do take world language. And so I asked for some data just to kind of find out how many students have never taken world language to see kind of what the impact would be. And what I found out, this is just a snapshot from this year. So if you look at each class, you have about 30, a little over 30 students that have never taken a world language, that now have to have that new requirement. Now, to be fair, not every one of these 30 students, some of our students with disabilities that might not take a world language, but it's pretty close to that number. So in the budget is an addition of one world language teacher who will initially be split between the middle and high school. So they'll be split to meet the middle school need of that big class size for those two grade levels. And then they'll start at the high school to help meet the mandated requirement for graduation. So it's a kind of a creative way to solve two problems with one person. So I'm going to just summarize what I said. World language within the budget, we need one new position to meet the new language requirements and to deal with the middle school issue. We need a total of two FTEs at the high school, but one will be a reallocation from, from Johnson School. We, we have a mandate for the, the English, dual language teacher for, for Bethel High School. And I already mentioned, and I'm just mentioning it to let you know that we haven't ignored special ed even though they have some increased needs. We, we actually did fund additional special ed position through a grant that we have. So in this budget is a total of three, three new FTEs.
Certified.
Certified, certified. So another focus has been the implementation of STEM. And again, this is the second area of our strategic plan and really looking at developing our STEM programs for students in the district. We know that that's one of the areas nationally where there's a big job market glut or, or deficit. And so these are some of the ways that we're looking to address STEM in the Bethel Public Schools. We've also been focused on personalized learning. Really excited to tell you that we're, we're in the infancy of starting a program with Nogatuck Community College to actually allow our students to become certified in manufacturing. And they're looking at us as a pilot. We have a business advisory council at the high school. And there's a lot of companies around the table, Matt sits on it, that are really saying, we have good jobs right here in Bethel. How are we training our students to appropriately fill those jobs? And this program used to be at Abbott Tech. And they're moving out of Abbott Tech to the Westcon Campus. This is Nogatuck is doing at Community College. And we're, I think with Brookfield and Danbury, our students are going to have that opportunity. So while they're in, while they're in high school, in the afternoons, they would go over to the Westcon Campus and they would work on programs to get their certification in, so that they can leave with a certification in manufacturing engineering. So it's a really wonderful opportunity. And we also know through our work with our business advisory council that there's jobs waiting for these kids, which is the beautiful part, and they're good paying jobs. And so it's really an exciting thing. We've added all five of our pathways, business and finance, global studies, education, career technical readiness. Healthcare, healthcare. And we're, we're going to start a new one in the arts, which we're excited about. We've made a lot of strides with infrastructure. We've got a lot of building projects going on, a lot of building projects. We're in great shape with Johnson and Rockwell. The, the projects are on track. I think we're going to have a groundbreaking sometime at the end of March. We, we finally got our GMP and we're ready to move forward on the next steps. This is an interior view of a new training center that's being built pretty rapidly on the campus. Every time you turn around, there's something new going up. And it's just going to be an awesome facility once those are done. One of the things that we are struggling with, and it's also reflected in this budget, is that last year, remember when we didn't get our ECS money? We were being fined all year for ECS and not getting the money. At the end of last year, we turned back to the town.
Eight hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars.
Right.
How much?
Eight ninety-one.
Because that was the ECS that the town wasn't getting. So we, we understood that, that should come from us. And we turned that back to the town when, when that monies weren't there. Part of how we did that is we reduced custodial staffing. And so we actually went down, we, we, we reduced other staffing also, but it's been a huge impact in, between Johnson and Rockwell School, we're down a custodian. And we've tried to make it work, but I mean, it's at some nights where we can't even get the garbage emptied. And it's becoming a significant problem. So within this budget, we felt that it was a need that we had. So I guess it's a new position, but it was a position that was always there and had been there, right Terry?
Yes.
For years.
So much of that money that was turned back was in delay of hiring. We spoke to everyone about that during the process. So we put off a lot of hiring and that savings fell out. And at the end of the year, we had the funding. And there were a few positions that we just didn't fill at all. And one was this custodian. We did not put it into the budget we're in this year. But we are truly struggling without it. We keep shifting it from building to building thinking, oh, it'll work at this school instead. And so we keep shifting the missing, the vacancy. The vacancy from building to building and it's not working. We were staffed at that previous level for quite a while. And before, before the recession, we had even more custodial staffing. So we were at the correct, it was all doable and it's no longer.
Yeah. We made a lot of improvements on the campus this year, most of which you know about. The, the junior parking lot finally got lights. It's a safer place for everybody to be. The paving, the paving came back to the campus this year and we're almost done with all the paving projects from the town. We, we actually had a lot of tree removal for two reasons. One was because of the paving projects. But we also had some areas on the campus that were just completely overgrown, particularly around the, the football field, the stadium field, which actually was really not safe because there was not good things when you can hide in, on a, on a campus. And so we removed that brush. We also did some upgrades to the snack shed, which I know you're aware of. We were able to upgrade some areas in Bethel Middle School, including the projection system. And we finally, they're not in yet, I don't believe, but they're ordered. We had about 10 rows of completely destroyed seats. And those are all being replaced and they're on order for this year. And we were able to replace, as you know, the valves, the boilers and the chiller plant at Bethel Middle School. And we're, have been in the process over the past couple of years of re, I always say it wrong, recommissioning, I always say reconditioning, but it's not, recommissioning all of our HVAC units so that they're working properly. And it's really had a positive impact. It's been through Berry School. So we have a mechanical engineer who's looking at each unit, identifying what's wrong with these units and we're fixing them. And we were always on defense mode. We were always cleaning up a mess that happened afterwards. They went, I think they're at the middle school now or they're done?
They went through the middle school.
Correct. And now they're at the high school. So again, that was a capital item that you approved last year in the budget. And it's really, I think the long-term gains from that will be huge because I think we'll end up saving money because we're actually addressing the issues proactively. So in, what we're requesting this year in terms of capital needs is a couple of different things. I think none of this should be a surprise to you because I, we've mentioned it before. Our high school boilers are just at the point where they're 47 years old. They were original, they were never replaced in the renovation. There's right now three boilers. One of them is not working at all. And one of them is at the point where it's not going to be working soon. They're actually using parts from the, the dead boiler, I call it the dead boiler, but the boiler that's not in play to fix the one that is because they don't even make these units anymore. And that's how old they are. The reality is, is we need two working boilers to actually heat the high school. And we've been giving it life for at least 10 years. We've had repairs made. We've tried to get it to a point where it can work. So we're looking to convert to high, high efficiency natural gas. The, do they have, you have the, in your, your portals, what do you call your thing?
I have a handout too.
Yeah, okay. We have a handout, and I think it's in your, your, your thing, where it actually talks about mechanically what's wrong with the boilers and how, why it needs to be replaced. And so, and it's not something where we can swap out one and just add them over time. The room is not actually configured to be able to do that. So unfortunately, it all has to happen. So the second thing that we put in our capital budget is resurfacing of the track. Again, this was, this was on the capital plan before. It's at the point where it's its 10-year replacement cycle. It's, it's actually discoloring and starting to wear. And so it's at a point where that also, if we don't deal with it, it's going to become a bigger issue. And then lastly, the third capital need we have is band uniforms. We had a student come because she wanted to show you. We have a national award-winning band who is wearing uniforms that are over 20 years old. Oftentimes, they're held together by pins, correct? Safety pins. And you, you want to show them, don't you?
We have buttons on the side that when we do certain visuals, actually pop open. So like one that we do is we come down and we turn and of course, I don't do it now, but sometimes the one, they'll pop open on the side very quickly.
Yeah, zippers are broken.
There are two zippers like on the sides that just don't zip anywhere, so no longer on the tracks.
So they're over 20 years old. It is, they're, they, they have certainly gotten their life and well-worn, thank you sweetie. And they're well-worn. So in this budget, we are requesting some updates on band uniforms. So I know you probably have some questions about revenue and what's coming into the system. And I'm going to apologize that when I did this, this chart, the ECS money actually changed, what, the projected ECS money, according to the governor's budget, actually changed yesterday. Now, it's not significant. Terry, what's the difference?
Well, the number now, the number now projected for next year, well, this year is 7,917,835 and next year is 7,784,239. So it's a drop of about $133,000, but.
Is that yesterday's email?
That's the mistake in his budget. Oh.
So I sent that one. I was at a meeting this afternoon. I sent you.
I think this is the one you sent me this afternoon.
Okay, so then that's a correct.
We'll recheck it, but.
Yeah, we'll check it again.
I just want you to know, I sent a, an email to our delegation. I copied Bob and Matt on it. It just baffles my mind, with a growing student population, with a higher EL population, with a higher free and reduced lunch population, that we would be caught. Personally, I think we should be receiving more money based on their formula. So I'm looking for, I asked the delegation to get us a response as to why, like, I would like to see that breakout of actually how they calculated that allotment because it makes no sense to me. And I, and it just actually baffles my mind. So I'm waiting to hear back on that. I don't know what to say except that. It, it is not as bad or dire as. I don't know what to say, except that it is not as bad or dire as when I stood here last year. I think last year, we were talking about major cuts to ECS. It clearly is not, but there, in the current proposed governor's budget, there is a slight reduction over the, over the next two years. But I believe Bob certainly budgeted that anyways, correct?
Yes.
Yes, so it reflects that. The other thing is specialized cost caps. So, theoretically, we're supposed to get reimbursement. When we exceed four and a half times the cost of a special education student, we're supposed to get a hundred percent reimbursement when we exceed that cost from the state. We've never gotten that. And we've hovered anywhere, and we, I don't know the last time we were at a hundred percent, but we've hovered between eighty and seventy. This year, our return is seventy-four.
It was seventy-four this year.
Correct. And the problem is, is that there's a pot of money. And so, the legislature allocates a pot of money. And what happens is, they don't change the amount in the pot. And so, they look at all of the districts that submit for individual students, and then they just allocate it, and they cap districts based on how much money they have, instead of what they're supposed to do, which is provide the reimbursement for when you exceed those costs. So, it's just an impact, and we reflect that in our budget, correct, Terry?
Yes. And the governor's budget kept the funding the same again.
For the record, going back to when I was on the Board of Ed, starting in nineteen ninety-nine, it was, it's never hit a hundred percent.
Yeah, correct.
I'm not even sure it's ever hit eighty, ninety percent. It was below...
Yeah. And I've heard people talk about changing the formula to like, two and a half percent. If you don't ever increase the pot of money, you can change the formula all you want, it's still going to get capped.
Can you just, I must have missed it. So, you're saying if we spend four and a half times more than a typical student on a special ed student, then we're supposed to get a hundred percent of whatever in excess of the four and a half, four and a half times?
Correct. Yeah, so let's just say hypothetically, we pay a hundred thousand dollars for a student. And I think our threshold at four and a half time is sixty-five thousand?
Seventy-two, I think it's seventy-two.
Okay. Anything over seventy-two before a hundred, we're supposed to get a hundred percent reimbursement to that. It's being capped at like, seventy-four percent of that money. And that, so that's the issue, is we're just not getting the full funding back. So, that just kind of summarizes on the revenue side. And so, as you know, I think you've seen this before, this is just an overview of how the monies are spent, but as Terry likes to say, we're a people business. So, almost eighty percent of our operating budget is in salaries and benefits. And then, the rest you're going to see didn't change significantly, with a little bit of an increase in special ed. And that has to do with two things. So, our overall request is three point four-three percent over last year's budget. And when you look at the breakout of that, it's the, it's one point eight-six percent. That includes all of the positions that I mentioned, the custodian and the three teachers, in addition to our contractual obligations that we have with our different bargaining units. We had a little bit of an increase in benefits. As you know, we're on the state partnership plan. It actually has done Bethel a world of good in terms of financially stabilizing us. Over the past couple of years, we've had no increase in benefits, because of the switch to the partnership plan. This year, the increase was about seven and a half percent.
I budgeted seven and a half.
And we're not sure that that will stay that way.
I believe, I believe the number that you folks received was around eight. But we have some bargaining units that will be contributing a little more, so I budgeted at seven and a half.
Yeah. Which compared to what we were dealing with before, we were seeing increases close to twelve percent, right?
Double digit.
Yeah.
Double digit.
So, in the scheme of things, and I will say, I think it's provided a better service for our employees. So, not only has it been fiscally efficient, I think that people like it better. They have access to better medical care, and so, that's been a positive thing also. We had a little shift in our transportation, not because we're adding more buses, but our contract was up, and so, we saw a little increase in our bus transportation. And then, special ed is also been an area that, just because of the number of students that we've had to outplace, so it reflects not only the additional students, and Mrs. Budris does a wonderful job, that number is based on the actual students that we have. And that's important to note. So, but each of the facilities or outplacements that these students have been put in have caused, that have, the tuition's gone up. And transportation costs are pretty expensive. I will share with you, I think I shared with you last year, there's a group of us that meets in Western Connecticut, so that all this talk about regionalism in the state, we've actually been meeting for the last year and a half. And all of the Western Connecticut superintendents have been coming together and looking at ways that we can share services and cost. I think I shared with you last year that we did it with technology purchasing. That was one way that we came together as districts. We also developed a special ed program where we tracked transportation and the cost, so that when directors were placing students, they had easier ways to actually share rides. Or, we are also putting in there how much we're paying, because what we found was, is that transportation companies were charging different districts different amounts. And it created leveraging to negotiate with the different transportation providers to get better rates. So, it's had some indirect effects. We're actually talking about, this is not a short-term thing, but there's high interest in the group to actually create our own special ed facility, so that we could, instead of looking at outplacing students, that we could bring our students together, for the first reason, provide better quality education for students, because I question sometimes that. But secondly, it would be more fiscally efficient. So, and because of there's so much talk on, of regionalism at the state level, we're also meeting with our representatives through CAPS to see if the state is willing to actually help, like, fund us as a model pilot, to actually invest some money. And we're looking at two different sites at this point. At Monroe, in Monroe, Connecticut, Chalk Hill School, which is the school that Sandy Hook went to afterwards, it's empty right now. And it's in pretty good shape, because they had, done some renovations after Sandy Hook. So, that's one site we're looking at. And then, there's another site in Newtown. This is like, years out, but it just goes to show you that we are thinking about how we can come together in different communities and work together, so that it's not only fiscally efficient, but it's actually better for children. And I think that's the big picture in the long run. So, again, we're trying to do it, but we have some challenges this year that we haven't had in the past. Our budget is pretty much in line, it's actually on the low side to some regional communities. I always hesitate to put this up, because every community has a different story. And sometimes, putting that up and comparing it isn't fair, because their story is so different. But that's the end of four fifty. Okay.
Can you go back to, for a second?
Here?
No, one more. Again, one more.
Okay.
All right. So, when you add these numbers, that's what gets you to three point four-three. So, that's the part of each of the increase, okay? Because transportation, the increase is actually three percent across the line for transportation, but the impact on the budget is that. Okay?
Okay. So, do you want to stop? Or go right into the horse, sweetie? Do we usually stop?
Yeah.
Yeah?
We always stop and then we just ask questions.
Okay.
You guys have questions?
So, I think Dr. Carver explained pretty well about the additional personnel and all that.
Going forward, I would assume that, looking at ESL, looking at each year, it seems to be getting a growing number. You're just about at a point now, just about every school requires a special teacher for that.
Yeah, I think...
And if I'm looking at the growth in terms of the number of students, are you going to approach a point where you may have to have, especially like, the high school, as you're going forward with these bubble classes, perhaps a Portuguese instructor, a Spanish instructor, or, you know, whatever other language is in command?
Well, the, so, to answer your question, the, I'm trying to get to the slide. When you look at the total numbers, all of those students, here it is, all of the students don't necess, we have, Mickey, how many main language groups do we have?
Twenty.
Twenty, we have twenty-three different language groups that, of students that come into the Bethel Public Schools. Our predominant two are Spanish and Portuguese. So, you're right, we have gotten close to the numbers. But right now, if we, if we got to the number, if it keeps, to answer your question, if it keeps growing the way it is, you're right, long-term, we may have to see some additional certified staff at both the middle school and Johnson.
Okay.
Long-term.
My other question is concerns of track.
Yes.
Is, I guess we sort of have an obligation to the provider that donated it. And was it in the terms that we have to upgrade it?
Was there a term of agreement signed? I wasn't here then.
I haven't seen an actual agreement.
Correct. I think it was more of a verbal commitment.
And we assumed that we would take care of it.
That the town would maintain it once it, once it went in. I will tell you, with the new facility, we are actually, we're getting written agreements in terms of the maintenance piece of it. But I, I believe, Matt, unless you know, I believe it was assumed that the town would continue to fund that.
I don't believe it was written. I think it was a good faith agreement.
Now, Terry, is this, is this in your presentation, the cost of the track?
It's a hundred and thirty-one thousand. It's the same...
A hundred and thirty-one thousand to resurface.
Remember, it was bundled with the turf.
It's in the capital, right?
It's in the capital, right, of the budget.
It is. But I'm ninety-nine percent sure it's a hundred and thirty-one thousand. I should have said, the boilers, I believe, is just under a million.
It's around a million dollars for the boilers.
I could understand that, you know, forty-seven years old, that's original.
And the band uniforms, believe it or not, are about fifty thousand.
I think my daughter wore that uniform.
Been around a long time.
Now, Paul, we have the band uniforms in the capital section, only because of the cost. I mean, we can, you know, talk about, talk about where it should be housed, but we've been using fifty thousand as the cutoff, so that is why we put the band uniforms in as a capital item. And they do last a number of years.
Terry, and the boilers, is that a cost estimate we've got from Bergen?
That's a, that's an estimate. That's not a really...
That's not a bid number.
It's not a really vetted, yeah.
It's a good number.
Yes.
Do we need to get the, that total capital number together, or is Paragon working on preparing any specifications, so it could go up the bid, so we have a true...
Well, we didn't ask them to move any, move forward, because this is for next year's budget, so I haven't had them commit to that. But as we further develop, you know, because we're part of your overall capital plan, you know, that's the large capital.
No, I was just wondering how you, we worked the middle school chiller, I was wondering if we were working on the boiler plants for the high school and then...
They've been looking at it, but we haven't had them go out and really test the waters yet, because we...
Yeah, they definitely haven't written the bid specs forward.
Right, we haven't done any of that. An update on the chiller is the RFP went out, purchasing agent put it out, and it was up on the DAS website and your local website. And Bob Germanero walked some interested people through it at the mandatory site visit. That was yesterday or the day before?
Yes.
I just have one other question, maybe directed to Bob. Are we through in the high school with that electrical panel?
We're very, very close, waiting for the next gap. And so, in the athletic program, so we can shut the building off.
Oh, okay.
No, I don't want to interrupt the, you know, the sports.
Got it.
Yeah.
And then, then it's done?
Then...
Done, done, done?
Then it's done.
Good for forty-seven more years.
Will you send him home?
Yeah.
Yes.
Done, okay.
Yes. But he's on hook for one year.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, it's a work day.
And that, and that doesn't start until he...
Okay. Do you guys have any other questions?
That's it.
Okay.
Could we start on the board of financial, and then start with you, just come on out?
I have two questions. One is, for the resurfacing of the track, has there been a coordination with Parks and Rec to determine that that's a board of ed expense? Because at one point, I had heard that Parks and Rec is also thinking of that as their expense. Do we all, as a town, remember putting that?
Well, it's a capital project goes to any department, correct?
Yeah, it's kind of pulled out, capital is held off separately, so it's a board of ed project, but capital is like, the third category.
Okay, that's good, as long as we're not going to see it again in Parks and Rec, because that would be redundant. So, you don't get it twice. And then, the other question is more of a just inquisitive question about the accountability measure. So, what is that?
The state of Connecticut, how many years ago, Kristen? Probably about three, three or four years ago. They used to measure and rank districts solely on state standardized testing scores, you know, CMTs capped, then the S-VAC. And over the past couple of years, they really tried to change, to take a comprehensive look at, at a district. Oh, she has it right here for me. There's twelve different indicators, and I was trying to recall them. And each level, like, high school has, so instead of just judging a district based on one thing, a score that children take one time, they look at twelve different factors, and then they use different measurement that they collect over the course of the years to see what, to rate a district. And so, they look at, they do look at achievement tests, but they don't just look at the number of students proficient, they also look at growth of all students. So, that's, I think, a really positive thing. How many students participate, they look at chronic absenteeism, they look at preparation of post-secondary and career readiness, the courses that you offer your students that actually take at the high school level. How are students do on those post-second, the post-secondary career exams, like AP? In other schools, they'll look like at IB, do you know what IB is?
Inter, back to the Lord.
Different types of programs, they look at your graduation rate, they look at what they call your graduation rate on track. So, in the ninth grade, what percentage of your students are actually on track to graduate within four years? So, I could go on and on, there's twelve different indicators. And obviously, some of them do not apply to all our schools. Some of them are just high school. I will say that on our, on our most recent accountability scores, our biggest growth was actually at the middle school, which is wonderful, in terms of growth of kids. And we saw a lot of, but we just saw a lot of increases in a lot of areas. So, in the end, a district gets a score, which I'm not supposed to tell you, but you'll know it tomorrow. And then, what happens is, each school within the district is actually tiered into different levels. And for the last several years, Berry and Rockwell have been identified as schools of distinction, which means they're at the top ten percent of the state. And all of, so there's five tiers of schools in Connecticut, and you're put into those tiers. And our three other schools are in Tier Two, which is really positive. And I think one of the biggest things, especially at, is high schools oftentimes struggle to get into the Tier Two level, and ours has been consistently for the past couple of years. There's a great website called EdSite, and you can go in and you can see what the indicators are, and it really has all the accountability scores and stuff in there. You should check it out.
I just had a question. You mentioned that you were able to hire some people on grants this year. How many, how many...
Just one special ed teacher.
And how long does the grant run for?
It's a, it's a, it's continuous, it's a federal grant.
Okay, so at this time, it's a hundred percent unpaid for, there's no...
Correct, correct. Yeah, and it's something that we get every year, it's a, what do we call it, non-categorical grant?
It's an entitlement grant.
Correct.
And IDEA, our IDEA funds probably directly related to our number of students going up in special education, has crept up slowly, and so, it's up enough that we could absorb another teaching staff.
It's not something that would have to reoccur and come back into our budget, if that's what you're asking.
Right.
Yeah.
When we do a COGS grant, you have to reoccur for so many years, if you don't have any grant left out.
Correct.
Allow them...
You know, Mike, I did want to, I did, Dr. Carver spoke about a topic, and I did want to show you that we put the evidence in the binder. So when you do look at the superintendent's budget by object code, back on page eight, I showed the history since two thousand seven, two thousand eight. So back in two thousand seven, two thousand eight, we had three thousand one hundred and forty-two students, and we had four hundred and eleven point eight, eight FTE. And for the year we're in now, we have three thousand one hundred and thirty students, and we have three hundred and ninety-six point three two FTE. So you can see that the reduction came through the years of the Great Recession. And, and also, for a bunch of years, you'll see that our enrollment did dip, but it is now back to the previous levels. But we have not put back those, you know, more than fifteen staff members, and we've done a lot of reallocations, as you've heard, year after year. But this year, we did, we hit a point where we weren't able to just move staff.
Okay.
Yep.
So, before I ask these questions, I just want to preface that you're my favorite superintendent ever. And I think that, you know, you have a great hair and a great team. I have a lot of admiration for the school system, there's a lot of moving parts. I'm, I'm, you know, using this as a prologue, so it might mitigate the thrashing I get on Facebook when I ask these questions, so. But I absolutely understand it's very complicated, and a lot of it is based on, you know, the largess of the state or whatever. And, and so the, the stead reimbursement, it's, I, I would not, I can't remember it ever being more than seventy-five percent, honestly. And so, I guess, and I, I'm not sure what this means, but after someone, after you've only received seventy-five percent of something over time, doesn't that seventy-five percent be your, become your one, one hundred percent? Because that's almost like, okay, we're never going to get a hundred percent.
Well, that's how we budget.
That's how, okay, good. I just wanted to know.
That's how we budget.
It's just like, if we're reading of getting that twenty-five percent, I can't let go of the budget.
No, 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 no.
It's not happening.
We actually budget that way.
Okay, good.
But we like to continually remind the students.
Yes, yes, well, you know, I know that they have it every year. Now, the, the, the staffing, like when you're talking about you need a one full-time equivalent, like with your cluster bubbles? Or what, I don't know if I'm saying that right.
No, you pretty much accurately said it.
What would, I mean, and, you know, shoot me, but could you not bring a seventh grade teacher down to this district?
No, and here's why.
Okay.
Well, our actual problem is actually moving up, not down.
Yeah.
So, the way certification is done in Connecticut, first, for teachers who teach what they call elementary, you have K-six certification. So you can teach at any grade level from kindergarten to sixth grade, you can move people wherever you want, you have a lot of flexibility. When you get to seventh grade, you have to have content area certification. So, if, if a child needs the four content areas, math, English, social studies, and science, you have to have four teachers in their content area to be able to teach all those subjects to that child. And so, and that's how we've gotten away with it before, without asking for more staff, is because we've just moved people to be able to accommodate the bubble. But because of the certification requirement, there's no way, and I had the middle school run at least three or four models to look at different ways that we could try to accomplish it, and this was actually the, the most fiscally efficient and the best for kids. Because if we did nothing, again, we'd have huge class sizes. But it's, it, the biggest issue is certification.
Are you saying that each grade has its own specific certification?
Each content area.
Science.
Com certified.
Yeah.
From grade seven through twelve. So you can't move a.
So, so if I teach English, well, I mean, it's got pros and cons, right?
It's complicated.
It is complicated. It's a, it's a good description of it, it's complicated.
But I don't want to, I want to make sure we don't give you incorrect information. You can move teachers down.
Yeah, correct.
Teachers can go down to grade levels.
They can't go up.
They can't go up. Okay, so an elementary teacher can't go up to a content certification area. But a content certification area can go down if you create.
Like we did.
But if they have to be content specific.
Yes.
They can go down to grade five, but if they're certified English, grade seven through twelve, they can go down to grade ten, but they have to be teaching English.
But they can only teach English.
They can't be teaching math, they can't be teaching.
So when these bubble classes went through Johnson, we.
We just moved teachers.
We moved teachers up with the class, and we did move.
This is a case, that's all I'm asking, because, you know, a content teacher who's certified.
Yes.
Would be certified in a grade lower, and that, and I, you know.
But the problem is moving up, not down.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
We don't, and we, we just have the right number in eighth grade. There aren't, there aren't any excess staff to move down.
Correct.
Okay, so the world languages, it says it's become a requirement?
Yes.
And, and there are that many kids who have never taken a world language?
I was surprised, yes.
I would be able to look, except for my battery died, and I usually get four hours.
It's a hundred and sixty-two, I believe, of the current class that just have never taken a world language.
Okay, I, I was just thinking, because I, I mean, we had the, it's a graduating requirement.
Well, I think people have the perception that they had it as a requirement, but, because it's a college requirement. It, it is absolutely, so all of us went to college, and, or most of us did, and, and, and we took world language because the colleges require that we take it. It's, as long as I've been in, as long as I've been an educator in Connecticut, I have never known it to be an actual graduation requirement, which it now is.
Okay, now this one, you're really going to want to shoot me, so.
Okay, you're preparing me.
Study on, study on. So, now you've got the custodian, right? Now, you've got the STEM program. I mean, is there a building management kind of niche that, you know, like, so, I mean, I'm thinking students manage the building, you know, we learn to do that, and then we take out the garbage, and.
Well.
And so, I know it's not.
I know what you're suggesting, is that we have our kids clean.
Okay, basically, but not in that way, but learning something like, not, not just gratuitously taking out the garbage.
I, I think, I, I would, I would argue that our custodians do a lot more than that.
And I don't mean that, that's the problem, you said you were having, that you couldn't get.
Well, I'm, I was just, I was just illustrating a point, that some days, that's all we can do.
We'll probably have to negotiate, that would be good.
You would.
Oh, would you?
Yes.
Could I take a union job and have a kid?
Correct.
And to help.
I don't need one thing.
Yeah, yeah, and I think.
That would be.
I, I would really just be a little bit.
Mr. Germanero reminded me, chemical handling too.
Excuse me?
I don't want, I, if this makes you feel better, we have had our students clean up.
Oh, no.
We absolutely have.
I have done that.
But it, but it's a chemical handling issue, and there's a lot of complexities.
Okay, you know, but I'm simplistic and so on. So, I do, I have two more questions.
Sure.
One is, and this, again, I'm just going to bring this up, no one really talks about it, but I talked to you a little bit about it. The people who are using Bethel addresses to attend the schools, and you were following up on that, trying to.
Still am.
Flush out the interlopers, and is that moving in a good way, I mean, have you found?
We have, we've made some significant progress. I think that it's a day-to-day challenge, it's hard to get your hands around, because typically, what we're seeing, well, what we saw the most of is families renting rooms. And they were living here, so I want to be clear. And we've worked with Tommy Galliford and Chris Baldwin, our building inspector. I, I think I shared before, we actually hire private investigators, because, because in the long run, it actually saves us money if we can, we can identify someone who's, who's not legally a resident of Bethel and is attending our schools. So every time we get something brought to our attention, we always investigate it. To be honest, we don't always know. And oftentimes, it comes from a child saying in class that they live in Danbury, or, or they live somewhere else. And so we, we, because, because there are residency rules, and, and we have to follow up on those. So we have made a very aggressive effort, but I, I can't lie to you and say that we've solved the problem, because I know we haven't.
I'm lying, and I'm not lying.
Well, and, and I, but I will, what I can assure you is that we, we follow up on every resident who reaches out about an issue.
I agree.
Yeah.
But it can really affect the bottom line, and that's why I'm asking. And do you have a number of how many might be involved?
Last year, I think we had like twenty, at least.
Yeah.
Twenty investigations?
Yeah.
Twenty students that.
Uh, no, twenty investigations.
Oh, so they didn't necessarily mean they weren't, they didn't like.
Correct, correct, right, correct. And, and.
Twenty violators and twenty.
Yes. And it does get a little tricky, and I think, Brian, you can appreciate this as a police officer, that sometimes, like I said, they're renting a room, that the rental of the room is illegal, but then it could trigger like a homelessness situation. So then we would be having to provide services for those children anyways. So, it is something that we constantly work out.
Again, a lot of moving parts.
Yeah.
And I really get that. So, now, should I wait till the four sixty if I want to ask about the field house?
I don't know, so.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Is included in this presentation?
Yeah.
I know, but I think I wanted to go. I'm not, it's not like I have candy crush up or something, I'm going to let down.
Oh, you have it. Yes.
The question I had was, because that's a donated, someone's financing it. And my understanding is that it's going to be on lease for five years, and it's going to be managed in a way that the property or the donor is somehow involved in the management or gives some sort of guidance or.
Correct, yes.
Guidance.
Correct. There's actually a, a maintenance management agreement that the board is currently negotiating with the donor.
Okay, so, so my big question is, after that five-year lease, because now it's great, because it's all donated and whatnot, and are they taking care of the maintenance for five years, or is that, so that's up to us, right? And so, I'm going, and do you have any idea what that is a year of the maintenance costs for that?
I don't think we do, I'm looking to Terry. I, I will say that the donor has put in a lot of energy-saving options, I believe it's going to be solar.
Cleaning equipment.
Cleaning equipment, purchasing all of.
So the kids can clean it.
Uh, all of the cleaning equipment is being donated by the donor. A lot of the maintenance upfront will be taken.
Is there any way to find that out, if, you know, if average?
We don't, we don't really have an estimate.
Yeah.
There, there are not many moving parts to it, it's just basically a large Butler Building.
Correct.
So it's, most of the maintenance is going to be cleaned.
Isn't it an open structure, see, I've never seen it, is it an open structure?
It is, so the way it is going to be, and I can point it out, is that on the top, let's try to better picture. So, this, if you're in the high school top parking lot by the police station.
Yeah.
There's a set of doors, and you're going to walk into a raised track. And, and so, and then it's going to overlook an area that is, that is set up, for the most part, to provide support for the track and field team. So you'll see like a, I don't know what they're called, like a long jump, some, they'll can put up hurdles, things like that. But the donor's also made it so that these things can be all covered, and they're, they're all going to be flat. So for example, if the band wanted to practice in that space, which I think they would. If the band wanted to practice in that space, they, or the ROTC wanted to drill in that space, they would have a flat area. But it's a substantial-sized building, do you remember the square footage?
No. Forty-five thousand.
Yeah, it's a big space. And it, to, to our first selectman's point, it's, it's pretty much all open. There's like one bathroom in the corner, and then there, there is some, some storage in the building, which we desperately need now, so that, that they'll have a couple of sport, storage room. The donor's actually putting in a, a team filming room, a, a training office for an athletic trainer.
ROTC storage.
Yeah, ROTC storage, but it's, it's, it's for the most part, pretty open.
Is there going to be any hiring as a result?
No, we don't expect that.
Athletic trainer, I don't know if that's going to.
We already have one.
Okay.
So we, we would assume that over time, our athletic director would schedule the building and provide the support for it.
Okay, I mean, again, I really have a lot of respect for you, but I'm, I'm so pretty stuck on the new employee, adding bodies, new employees, so, I mean, I'm, I'm struggling with that, but that's all I have, thank you. So, for the world languages, you're talking about A1FTE, how many world languages are taught?
So right now, we teach Spanish and French.
Okay.
We are, the board, I believe, just approved the other evening that we could actually offer Arabic. We have a teacher now who's a native Arabic speaker, and it's obviously one of the, the word, largest world languages. So we're going to be able to add Arabic as a third language, we'd like to offer Chinese also. But, but it kind of worked in our situation that we were able to add that course. So it's not only going to meet our needs from, from, from a class size perspective, but it also broadened the world language. I will say also, some of our students do independent studies in all kinds of languages. Is Jenny here?
Yeah, Jenny's here.
I mean, we, we, what other languages have they done? Russian.
Arabic, Russian, Italian, there's something close to twenty different languages that are offered. And, and. But those are the digital languages, and those don't necessarily meet the requirements for graduation, or do they?
No, it does.
It does need.
It does.
It does.
They're one of the critical.
And.
So typically, they start with French or Spanish at the middle school.
Okay.
Typically, the kids, and Mrs. Taranovich will tell me if I'm wrong, but when you get to the high school level, the kids that are taking those independent studies to learn another language, they're typically your motivated student who's.
It should really be the above and beyond.
Correct.
Because they're not going to meet the college requirements, because colleges really want three, four years. So those are the kids that are hitting their fourth year, third year.
Just looking for.
They're additional, some of the kids are juniors, or sophomores and freshmen, that are just interested and want to take a second language. But the majority is, are your juniors and seniors that are interested in dabbling in another language.
So for this bubble, does the bubble follow all the way until they get to level twelve grade?
We actually anticipate that most, when they get to the high school, a lot of it can be absorbed.
Okay, that was a question.
So I actually told Mr. Watson, in a couple of years, he's going to have six or four or less staff people at that point, because I don't, I think it's a temporary thing, that's going to move through the middle school, and at that point, unless something else happens, at that point, we can actually contract.
We've been talking about these students.
Since they were.
Kindergarten.
Yeah.
And we've been adjusting between.
Every year.
Berry, Rockwell, and then when they went to Johnson, and then moving through Johnson, and so.
Yes.
Another question, the boilers, do you have to replace them on high school? Does high, does high school have to be shut down, like during the summers, I would have to get that done? Is that how it works?
It'd be a summer type of thing, yeah.
Yeah, I figure.
For a non-heating season?
Well, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So.
Is that like that?
One of the areas which, of course, we discussed, a great presentation, by the way, thank you very much, was of course, special education and the cost. And every community around here seems to be dealing with, you know, a hundred thousand dollar per student at the low side, up to almost double that. And I appreciate you taking initiative, I assume that the area educators have joined in, educated to find out what is a longer-term solution. Are there any things, little bit shorter-term solutions that are out there and be considered in order to try to alleviate that, at least the cost associated with this?
I wish I had an answer that you, that you want to hear, but I, I think that we have internally done everything we can by creating programs in the district, because there's really two options. You can develop a program within the district to meet the children's needs, or you have to send them out. And typically, when it gets to a point when they're being sent out, not always, but a lot of the times, it's because of very extreme behavior. And so, Mrs. Budris has created classes at all of the levels now. When I first started, I think we only had it at the high school. And now we have it at every grade level. So we've been able to develop the programs internally, whether it's for students with behavioral issues, whether it's for students on the autism spectrum, medically fragile students. We have the continuum and the spectrum of services, and that's what's caused us. When you see other communities, millions of dollars in debt because of special ed, it's really because they haven't created the programs. We just are at a point where there's nothing left to create.
So can we offer our programs and be a vendor to other schools?
We have. So for example, the eighteen to twenty-one program, a student from New Fairfield came, and we tuitioned into it. I got to be honest with you, currently, our programs. I got to be honest with you, currently, our programs are full. But we, we have talked about that, and we've talked about it as a region in terms of expanding, um, and offering tuition. So that's, that's come up in our discussions.
So you cooperate with New Fairfield and other-
We do.
And then other regional schools, any cooperation?
Absolutely. We cooperate in a lot of levels, um, not necessarily sharing programs per se, but like sharing transportation costs. We, uh, we, if we, we absolutely would take a kid in if, if we had space and tuition in, uh, for that. But because we've developed programs, we really haven't had the need to send to another district. But I will share with you that regionally, because everybody's struggling with it, that's why we're having the conversations. What else can we do? And the only thing that we have left that we see right now is to create a regional program for students with disabilities. But again, that's going to involve a lot of planning over time. It's not something that's going to happen like this.
And more than likely, it would involve using RRESK, the Regional Educational Service Center. There's what, six or eight in the state?
Four.
Four?
Oh, whatever. Ours is at advance.
Yeah. Because they, they are the support for a region's, uh, you know, districts, and so, um, it'd be possible-
I will tell you that right now, in my little, my little group, I chair it, I chair the group with, um, Tom McMoran from Region Nine, uh, Eastern Reading and Barlow. And we, it's us, Ridgefield participates, Newtown, Monroe, Danbury-
New Fairfield.
New Fairfield, New Milford, Region Fifteen, uh, Region Twelve. And, and they're committed, they show up at every meeting, and we talk about things. It's, it's, it's very complex, uh, because, um, when we talk about doing things together, you know, each, each school district has their own bargaining agreements, each one has their own contractual obligations. And so it's a lot of like moving parts, but I have to say, and we've been meeting for over a year. So we did it even before there was Taco Regional, because we knew, um, that we, we, that there are things that we could come together on. So it, it is a committed group.
Thank you. Can I just add, you know, another component too, is parents are far more savvy now than they have ever been about the rights of their child. There's nonprofits that have advocates that work on, under behalf. So towns that try to cut corners find themselves in lawsuits to end, losing, you know, a thousand times what they thought they saved. So it's, there, there's not that wiggle room to, you know, provide a lesser service or not, because it, it'll catch up with them.
You're mandated by law.
Yeah.
First, just want to echo some of the comments that were made earlier about how you enjoy all these presentations. I think your chairman, who is in with us tonight, would be very proud of it. So shout out to Mary, shout out to all of you guys that you're doing a nice job, so thank you. It probably isn't a surprise, given the way I look. I've had a number of sleepless nights over the last few months. This is a really difficult budget season. I kind of look at it holistically, right? Because frankly, much of what's on the town side also relates to the school system.
It does.
When we start kind of thinking about what this year's increases are going to be, it starts pretty simply with looking at what our current budget is of about seventy-four and a half million. So that means for every seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, that's a percentage point increase. One point, I, I believe, with three-point-four percentage point increase, it goes to about one-point-five million dollars. So there's two percentage points. We are also introducing into this coming budget year debt service. Right, the town purchased and now has had delivered police station, and we've incurred some significant initial debt on the, the school side. That's being introduced into our budget in the amount of about nearly two million dollars. So again, there's almost three percentage points, so we don't know where you cut it off. So now we're at five percentage points. We also have some short-term debt that we have to pay off. That short-term debt, where rent is represented, or does represent, goods and services, that the town purchased throughout the financial recession. We haven't paid for it yet. I refer to that as, or I think as you refer to it as, that's our credit card balance, the town's credit card balance. We've got to pay that off, because it's our emergency fund when the next recession hits. And when the next recession hits, the town will do again what it did, what the folks to my left did appropriately in prior recession. So the town kind of helps ease taxpayers' burden by borrowing a little bit, uh, so that it, it helps bridge the gap. So with, with all those kind of moving parts, we really have to look at this holistically. And that's why I think we've gotten some of these questions, uh, about what the, the various components are. I guess I, I also want to just confirm, and this is probably Terry Best suggests to you, the boilers, about another million dollars, that I believe is a relatively dated estimate. Is there any reason to believe it's going to be banded pretty closely around that million, or is there potential for some filter exposure?
I don't think so.
I, I think we're okay.
Yeah.
I mean, we can ask for a, an updated number, but, and I will go back to Peregrin, but-
Yeah, I mean, our discussions were in the last few months.
Yeah.
Um, and I do believe that they understood the complexity of the issues. I know that there's some asbestos abatement that will have to occur, because there's, the boilers are so old. So, uh, I don't think so, because they're literally going to take them out and then repipe and put in natural gas.
There's a caveat there. Uh, the first selectman just showed me-
Yeah, the report.
Peregrin report that says it's about nine-thirty with a caveat that, yeah, actual review has to be done.
Yeah.
There's always surprises. Yeah, sure, it's a complicated system. So for the board, the board, thankfully, the board of selectmen's can take the first pass at this, and we'll have the benefit of, of their product. But again, when considering the full town position, another million dollars, so another percentage point can be considered for the boilers, the, the high school boilers.
Correct.
The, this resurfacing of the track, again, in the big picture, about one-thirty-one is, I think, was the number. So we put that in the consideration, and the band uniforms for fifty-five. Well, that's helpful, thank you. Again, I, what, what I think we would ask, and I'll include the board of selectmen, is that you all kind of help us understand what the priority is for the town. And again, if, well, the, the school side is, is supported tremendously by the town side.
It is.
So we look at it holistically. And given the challenges this year, again, on the spending side, right, we're, again, introducing two million dollars of debt service for, from the projects, the one-point-five and other items. We're going to need a lot of help and support from you all in kind of working through the process to get to a final suggestion that the entire town will find acceptable.
Absolutely.
So I'll get off my soapbox, say thank you, uh, and hopefully we'll get some more sleep, full nights.
Okay. I just have one more question about the chiller tank, or whatever chiller is the other way, or what that is with the, this air conditioner.
It is.
So I remember we had the meeting to, because that was a lot of money, and I just think, I mean, I hear boilers all the time, but I, that surprised me, because I didn't even know that that was a thing. So is it possible to get, um, an idea, like, over five years, what's going to come up, that, you know what I'm saying? Because that really, it kind of ambushed me, I didn't even know where it was coming from.
To be fair, I think it ambushed us a little bit too. It wasn't, we didn't really understand the complexity of the problem until Peregrin, the group that we had been working with, really uncovered it. Now, I guess one could argue, we should have known, because it was twenty-seven years old, that it was probably up for its life cycle, so that's completely fair. But within the ten-year, um, capital plan, do they have ours?
Do they have one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we tried to lay out, uh, there is a document that's, that is probably in your portal that lays out what we think most of the issues are going to be over the next several years. I think it was about ten years. We did talk about adding, um, looking at all of our mechanical systems to see if we should add that on there, just with their natural lifespans.
That's sort of what I'm getting at.
Correct. And so that, that is a fair statement, and I think there are some that are there, but there are some that are not. And, uh, and the chiller is a probably a good example, we should have probably had it there. And, uh, I, again, I don't think we knew the complexity of the problem until, until they got into it and did the assessment.
I understand, but sometimes, you know, like with that generator, there was sort of a surprise of the panel, the electrical panel, and, you know, just things that come up that, you know, you don't expect. And, and that's what I was thinking, if you had a whole overview of the lifespans of each major component, I, it would help be very useful for me.
Agreed. And I think we've talked about that, that's a good thing that we could do.
It's a point well taken.
It is.
And I'm going to give credit, I, when, when Bob Kislowski came, when I came, we, we first started doing a five-year plan on, on just the board of inside. And then when Bob came and became controller, he went to a ten-year overall, uh, capital plan, town inclusive of the board as a department of the town. And so we have been building that, that plan. It's a point well taken, to make sure we're, uh, being more comprehensive on laying out those plans.
The roofs are in there.
We have the roofs in there now, but, um-
The tanks are getting there now.
There is a lot in there.
There's, 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 um, but there is more that probably, because the more information-
Yeah, in my experience, it's been since, you know, up till now, so that's why I'm, it-
But agree, the more we can put in there, the better-
You can plant.
Leadership can plant. We agree.
With Peregrin doing the surveys now, you're going to have a better picture of all the mechanical stuff.
We are, we are.
You'll have a blueprint for the future.
Yes, and it seemed, you know, I, it seemed like I went too many years with, you know, putting the finger in the dyke, trying to hold everything together. And we, we just got to a point where, and Peregrin had first been hired by the town-
By Amaresco.
By, under Amaresco, and had, and had done a very good job for the town, and then, um, we hired them on to, to do this.
I just think, to my honest point, for me, just looking at the budget right now and the amount of expenses we have coming up, what would really be helpful is to know what's essential, what's, you know, important, and what's desirable, but maybe not, you know, something that we can do next year or the following year, because it's just, you know, looking at kind of the budgets coming through, I mean, it really is, you know, a huge, huge increase that I was looking at this year or so. You know, I think, you know, when we look at, we don't want to defer maintenance, right? Because then we get a big problem.
Yeah.
But, you know, if there's things that aren't necessarily that you can't get a little more out of, it might be helpful to us in terms of, you know, planning in the future.
I think we did a lot of deference of maintenance. I think that is part of, a piece of why we're in some situations.
I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with that.
Yeah, I think you're just saying-
Yep.
What I'm saying is, is-
Given the current situation-
Correct.
Yeah. Is there things that you could kick down the road? I mean, I could tell you one thing, that we may not have heat next year at the high school.
Oh, that's-
That's a big deal.
Heat is overrated.
Yeah, yeah.
Heat's overrated.
Was that what you just said?
I'm not really-
No, I know that.
I heard you in his life, so.
Point well taken, Brian.
And I wasn't on the chiller, I want them to heat up.
Yeah.
And I'm going to say, over the last ten to twelve years, we, our average budget is about two-point-three percent. The last three years, we were at one-point-eight, one-point-six, one-point-four-six. A lot of that was because we hit some good decision-making with moving to the Connected Partnership Plan, but we knew that eventually we would have an increase in, in health benefits. So, um, not all, you know, I didn't have any of those real, um, great, uh, things happen this year.
No, all I'm saying for us, it's just a balancing act. I mean, the town needs things, the school needs things, you know, what is it we're able to afford? That's the force, but, but it, it, we come-
And also, it's, you want to buy the budget to pass.
Yeah.
So if you get to a public hearing town meeting, and the town's parents see that increase, it, you know, it's kind of a dice roll, because that's a lot, you know, to make on, so.
I just have two quick questions.
Go ahead.
To Dr. Harper's point about the bubble going into the high school, at the, at the high school age, you might have some kids going to Abbottech, Mac High Schools, or other, so that bubble might decrease at that particular time.
Well, I mean, I think we've consistently lost the standard of students to those schools. But I think what can happen though, and I do think that, um, some of the staffing increases, uh, will actually go away in a couple of years. So we may actually be able to cut back in a couple of years. Because once it gets to the high school, just the structure of the high school and the way that they can absorb our students, it's just different. So, um, so once it goes through the middle school, I think we'll be in much better shape.
And another question is about, uh, the benefits for the three, or four new employees. Are all the benefits calculated in your budget, or does some of that reflect to the town side?
No, they're in our budget.
They're in our budget.
You have it all covered in your budget.
Health insurance is on our side for our employees.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Actually, I, we brought up benefits. Has the governor given you guys any indication on cost sharing? I know there's been talk about, he wants towns to start footing the bills for some of the pensions, like, is that something?
Yeah.
Is it, is that something that we need to start looking down the road in budgeting for? Are we going to have to?
Too early to tell.
I agree.
We, we have, um, I spent most of the day in meetings, uh, at CCM, going over that, that stuff, and there are competing bills, uh, the governor's staff is sending, uh, their surrogates out. Governor himself called me today to talk about it, uh, the lieutenant governor's coming to visit tomorrow to, uh, talk about a couple of things. One of them is the opioid crisis, and have a roundtable to discuss with the police department. But then she's coming here to this office to talk about school regionalization concepts, uh, teachers' pension. There are multiple bills pending. Some of them are absurd, and some of them might be worth talking about. But at this point, it's impossible to say where that's going to go, if anywhere. It's too early.
But, I mean, is there, like, a, I would imagine the schools are lobbying for no change, like we were talking about. Like, no change in the state's funding, um, these, you know, don't, you know, like, you, you were calling delegations for certain things. I would imagine this is one, as a town, we want to get behind, saying-
You said it beautifully, it's just passing on a state problem to local taxpayers.
Yes.
Right, that's my point, right, that's my point, you know.
So they're still going to spend the same amount of money.
We need to lobby, you know, we're talking about, we're lobbying for other things. It just seems like this is a pretty big issue that we would want to say, we're, we're pretty firm, we don't want you to cut this, the aid to the towns on that.
I, I will share with you, um, my position that I, that I'm going to be speaking to the lieutenant governor about. So first of all, Dr. Harper sent a beautifully written email to our delegation, and we were going to share that with the governor's-
I could share it with everybody.
Yeah, I think you should. But it talks about how, over the last, uh, and we were just looking at numbers since 2014, but if you go, go all the way back to 2001, um, the numbers of, uh, students that require additional services, whether that's, uh, non-English speaking, whether it's poverty levels, has more than doubled. It's gone up by two to two and a half times the, what the number was fifteen years ago. And so our demographics are shifting more in the direction of the urban center, and we're being treated like a wealthy, small town, and they're drawing back our ECS. And at the same time, they, uh, one of the proposals is that, uh, towns like us should pick up a quarter-
Yes.
Of pension costs moving forward. Not the legacy cost, not the six-billion-dollar balloon, whatever. They're going to, what I read in the paper today is, what we heard from the governor's chief of staff, is that they're going to restructure, basically, they're going to, they're going to refinance it over thirty years instead of twenty. They're going to, but they're going to, they're going to isolate it, so if that works for them, that's great. What I said to, uh, the staff this morning is that I object to any, any cost shift at all. And there's a lot of political pressure coming down from Hartford to towns like us to say, ah, come on, you know, you guys, all you want is money, you know, quit crying the blues, you got to have some skin in the game. Well, to me, that's nonsense. We, we all have skin in the game anyway, but pushing costs down to the town is a tax increase. They don't want to call it a tax increase, but it is. Any dollar that gets pushed compared to down to us, either is a dollar that comes out of the services that we offer, you know, it's one less teacher, or one less cop, or whatever, or it's a tax increase. And what I want to know, here's the question, I want to know why, and if any, I'm going to give you my trigger warning, because I'm going to sound like a raging Marxist when I say that. But I want to know why, if we're going to put every sacred cow on the table, we're going to talk about tolls, we're going to talk about increasing sales taxes, we're going to talk about restructuring, uh, health benefits, we're going to talk about taking union, uh, positions and trying to draw back their pensions, why aren't we talking about the top marginal income tax rate for the wealthiest people? It's, why is that, why is it assigned to even mention that? Because the, the, there's a tax increase that's going to be borne by everybody, but it's going to be borne twice by people who own property in towns like ours. going to be borne twice by people who own property in towns like ours, when we have to pass that cost along. And that's, I think that's a valid question. A lot of my colleagues are agreeing with me on that.
So, there's, there's a, the delegation is going to be in the committee Monday morning. They're being hosted by the chamber, so I think it's a good opportunity. And we are advocating, I do it all the time, I was writing testimony today, because I, you have to stay on top of it, or else, they just do it.
It's not one year at a time.
They do.
Dr. Carver, would you upload that letter to this...
So, the, he's talking about, I think, an email I sent today, correct?
Yes, yeah.
And I, I sent it to the chairman, but I will send it to all of you. And I was really just questioning, given our changes, how is it, and I sent the ECS formula that the governor said that they were using, how is it that we could possibly be losing money based on their formula and our increase in enrollment, our change in demographics?
We should be getting more.
We should be getting more, at least stay where we were.
Yeah.
And there is one thing in the formula that, that I did, and I want to know if this is the reason, because they just put out the numbers, and they don't put out how they came to the number. And, and I, yeah, it's like a sleight of a hand.
And throw it up there.
And so, I, I want to know, how did you come up with a number that you came up for Buffalo? It had to come from somewhere.
Every, every town around us loses ECS dollars.
Almost did.
Not Danbury.
Danbury didn't, but that's, and they have a very different circumstance.
More than us were similar to.
Um, I think, I, so, I will, there's a, there is a chart I can send to the whole committee. It's from the Connecticut Center of School Finance. I don't agree with everything they're putting forward, but one thing that they do well is they do do a good, quick analysis of some of the numbers. There are some things that I completely don't agree with, that they're really pushing at the state level, about how to fund special education, and it's really a sleight of a hand. So, if you hear about that, you should be afraid, because they want to use an insurance model for special ed funding, and we can, we could spend hours talking about that, but it, it is really a sleight of a hand. But in that, they give an analysis of all the towns, so you can see which towns were increased, which were, which were lowered, and, and they also give you how they, the formula that they're using to make the determination of how much communities get. I mean, it's broad, just in general terms, this is what, this is how we calculate ECS. But, I, it makes no sense, because I look at their formula, I look at our change in demographics, and it makes no sense that we would be getting less money. So, we asked the question of the delegation, and I, I heard back from at least two of the delegates that they're going to look into it for me.
I think we have to take that with the governor's office, too.
Yes.
So, you'll, Dr. Carver, you'll circulate that?
I will, I promise I will.
Good time to talk about four sixty.
Sure. So, I'm just going to refer you to the church up here, and I know you have a copy of this in your folder. So, we're trying to keep it steady, trying to keep it at exactly the same amount. And as you know, part of it is some contractual services. We have certain projects that we're hoping to accomplish, which you have outlined in some of the schools, and repair and maintenance. So, Bob's happy to answer any specific questions that you might have.
I have a question, Bob. During the construction of the, the two schools, are we, have to do any of the maintenance of those buildings, or what's...
No, once, once Rizzo takes over, we will not be responsible for anything. The only thing we'll be responsible for is anything that our students are still in. So, if the section of the building was still...
Right. That's what I'm, yeah, that's what I'm getting at. So, you still have, you still have to maintain a portion of the building while the other portion is being renovated.
Yeah.
Correct.
And the provision.
Yeah. And all of the, all of the, each of these areas are broken down in your...
You have more than two.
You have everything there.
Yeah.
It's pretty straightforward.
Pretty straightforward.
It's ours.
We've kept the number flat for a number of years.
Get rid of that straight.
Yeah. We have applied for a security assessment.
It's bothering me.
Do we share that? Terry, did we share that we applied for a grant for school security?
No.
We don't, we don't have the breakdown of the accounts.
You don't have the back, yeah, you do.
Well, you know what? We got to get out of this then, and probably...
You got to go into the four sixty account that's...
Yeah. You do have the breakdown.
Oh, it's it, okay.
It's in another folder.
We have applied for a school security grant.
Not for budgets.
The federal government is, is doing a grant that's...
Another round of Homeland Security.
Homeland Security, fun of the schools.
No.
It's like, it's Homeland Security, and...
Just through Homeland Security, it's a school security grant.
We had an extensive assessment done at Bethel High School. Our new schools are going to have, as part of their design, the latest security features for schools, because that's part of actually requirement now.
When you renovate.
When you renovate schools. But, the high school is where we had some concerns. So, we had an assessment done of the high school, they made some recommendations, and we included all of those recommendations into the school security grant. So, hopefully, we'll hear soon, I imagine we'll get some money. I don't think, I think we applied for like three hundred thousand.
Well, whatever they...
We have to match.
Whatever they qualify, whatever they say is okay, we have to match. And our plan would be to have a one percent account, because that's...
That's part of why it was established.
Yeah.
Oh, so there's like, if you already have security in there, is there lots of planning of funds or anything like that?
Well, it's kind of like the school construction project. The town is putting forward six, well, the whole project is sixty-five million, I'm just making it for round terms, right? And then, the state of Connecticut is going to fund forty-five percent based on eligible cost, right? And we've already been approved for that. It's very similar.